Only because I don't want to walk across. Okay, yeah, but I'm.
You can check.
Parts I'm not making over here.
We're actually, we're actually live.
All right.
There you are.
All right. So for those of you who are, please either turn your, the sound, if you're going to listen to the meeting on your phone, please turn, turn the sound off on your computer or vice versa, or else we are really nasty people.
So Nancy Asgarian is, oh, well, she's in Maine sick, Christine Kenney's homesick, and Kent Moffett has got a funeral in Canada, but they're all on the phone. Ryan O'Donnell is here, Charlie Norrie is here, Cheryl Badaloni, Carrie Gillis, Tom Crispoe, Robert Peterson, myself, Cap Muse, Kathy O'Leary, the secretary, and Superintendent Brad Jackson. All right, tonight, we're just discussing superintendent search, how we want to go about it. We've all sent some information, we have some information in front of us. So I will actually just look at the quick checklist of items in the search process, unless anyone else wants to say anything or start somewhere. Okay, so the MASC did send us, and this is from 2018 when we did that search. So it's pretty comprehensive, and I'm not sure why we actually pay them to do stuff, because they'll do most of it because we're members.
I think the first time, that is, we did not pay them. We paid them a very small fee, and we didn't have Dorothy, we had, you know, the, the actions.
No, it was Glenn's.
One food.
Yeah, Glenn was one of the main characters.
One executive director.
Very nice.
Now, he came out and just spoke and helped her, and really made everybody do it.
He did a good job.
Yeah.
That was kind of impressive.
So that's probably what they're talking about, that they don't want to be an engine to talk to you about it, whereas the next time, we actually hired them to be our consultants, which I'm not sure, but I do not want to go that route. I don't know if anybody else wants to go that route.
I would very much agree with that.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, I agree with Pat. I think I was really, I mean, we haven't discussed it, but off the top of my head, I would really like to do it without MASC, because according to that litigant, uh, the guide, there are a lot of services that they offer us without a fee, and if we can take advantage of them, um, and if they're all interesting, I think we might have, you know, a good direction to go. I don't know, at least we could have stopped there. We need help, we can all retire somebody.
I would, if I may, I would prefer to take, I would prefer to take the process and go, go to get that done.
Uh huh.
We don't pay out a lot, you know, it's, how we work is a pretty reasonable thing. I think we should involve, nobody has any sense of that, we should involve our employees as to how we handle our ministerial perspective somehow.
I can't hear you, Bob, can you push that mic closer?
It's actually Brad's phone. People are just going to have to speak up, so everybody can hear who's on the phone.
Well, Bob, you don't want to hear, you don't want me to hear you.
I do. Is that better?
If you want to repeat what you want to say, or, I mean, I believe this is.
I'm sorry, Nancy, I was saying that, uh, all things considered, I would rather have Howard involved in that aspect of the legalities of what's open and what's not open, and, um, when we move to the next step, I'd rather pay him to do that.
Oh, I see, yeah, that, that's no problem.
I also think that Howard knows his own limitations, so if we ask him something, then he doesn't have the authority to answer, or doesn't have the information. He's not going to bluff, he's not going to come up with silliness, he's going to be honest with us and say, that isn't my area of expertise. I suggest you talk to so and so and so forth. And, I mean, he's got a history with the school, he knows us, he knows the whole program, I think he's good.
Good, good. Being part of it already. Nancy, being part of this, sorry, Nancy, being part of this already, and working with Pat and Bob, um, yeah, I wasn't totally happy with the way things went about. I felt restricted, um, and the way the committee was set up, and what we couldn't, couldn't do, and so, um, they want my guidance, but I, and I didn't indicate this to Daddy. I think we can do a great job on our own, and hopefully come up with a great list of candidates, deciding on what type of committee we want to form, uh, what representation, because I think that was, I had a problem with the way that was set up, you know what? And, uh, so that's, uh, that's what I'd like to see happen, so I will echo what you guys said.
Is this something we need to vote on, uh, Pat? Or just agree?
Agree.
But, I, I, did you hear, is it okay for me to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I would like this defined, rather than being the street defined, uh, I feel the last time we were bouncing between MASC and ourselves, and if we're doing it ourselves, I think one of the things discussed in the, uh, in the guide was to have everything, uh, defined, and I, um, you know, I don't think that it's clear by here.
Well, I, can I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, uh, I, I, you know, I kind of hear everything, and I don't want to keep interrupting, so, um, forgive me, but, um, I would like us to do it, I would like us to define it, and then if we need help, I think we can always ask for help, we can ask Howard, and we can always go back and get someone from MASC. But one of the, one of the steps in this, uh, guide said, that if one of your candidates, if none of your candidates is acceptable, there should be a plan in place. We never had a plan in place, we just assumed one of our candidates would be acceptable. I think there's a lot of planning that goes into this to make it go, the internal, the external, the requirements, the, 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 um, will we do that? I don't know. So we have to wear the song to do all that?
Well, I think that, I think that, I don't think we were undefined the first time, I, I think that, I personally think there was a problem with the process. I think the, the group, and I, I think Dorothy did what Dorothy was here for, she gave us guidance, but I think the problem the first time was the process from the beginning, I think we tried to be inclusive, and if anything, we were over-inclusive, and it, it, it tainted the process from the outset. There were just too many people on that subject, and, uh, there were too many people whose interests were limited, uh, and I think the process went downhill from it, and I think that's a lesson we should all learn from.
Based on some of the things that, uh.
I want to say I'm you, what's your?
Lance, fifteen.
Oh, maybe, or.
How much is this thing?
You're, uh, um, that just wanted to ask you more about the first time, uh.
Let's see, we had, we had Christine, we had, yeah, one member of the school, five in the school committee, Karen, and then we had, uh, we had, tell them that we couldn't get everybody from each department.
We had, we had teachers, Karen, we had.
Right, we had five supposedly town people, and we had five, um, the teachers and the secretary.
Yeah.
So there were fifteen of us.
Okay, thank you. This is Ken, and I like, I like the thought of, um, attempting to, to ourselves, like, I, I like the idea of, um, having, uh, and, um, and, um, also that part before, and, and like, um, yeah, yeah, like, attempting to ourselves with, uh, your prior knowledge and some guidance, I just wanted to ask you, who covered it specifically?
My apologies, Christine, he's our, he's our attorney, he's our counsel.
Okay, I thought, I thought so, but I wanted to be clear that it wasn't someone other person, so, uh, thank you.
All right, I think you're out.
Based on some of the concerns that the seasoned members have expressed about how the last process went, and based on things that were publicly available about that process, I, I do understand the concerns about going back and doing the MASC route exactly again. Um, having said that, um, it could be that part of that was MSA, MASC, their approach, or it could have been the directions and the guidance that MASC was, was discovering. Uh, I would be curious to ask, particularly from the administrative perspective, and I'm thinking and looking at Karen, when she was here, has always been here, and will be here going forward, and also from Brad's perspective, as someone who's been through a search process on a couple of other angles, both when you were leading Holliston, and, I mean, anyway, if there's any particular sort of technical, ministerial, other, other aspects of those procedures that MASC, or whoever was designated to perform, that you might get concerned about getting done if, um, there wasn't somebody in a similar position, or in fact, or not, or ways in which you might think it might go much better, and I just open that up to any, you're, you're.
If you're asking my, the last time, Dorothy ran it, but I did a lot of the work.
Mm-hmm.
So she did a lot of the coordinating after I would check with the committee, and I'd see who was in the day. So I think she, she, Howard took care of giving me the language for all of the postings, so that I have them legal.
Mm-hmm.
So if you're asking my opinion, you did it five years ago on Ireland, I think we did work with the young guys, because we did already, we already did most of the work in the brochure, all of that was in the, in the, so we have, we have all, and I had everything from the search two years ago, I did everything from the search two years ago, that I can, I can, I gave some of it, whatever, so the piece, I, I don't see why you need to, because I, because I was helping her with it anyway. Really, the only thing to achieve was she attended the meeting, I did not.
She talked to me.
Huh?
And she contacted me often.
Yeah.
So Karen, do you feel comfortable in being part of helping us do it ourselves?
I don't have any problem with it, that's what I get paid for.
Well, that was not, not to be without that much.
I know, I get paid, I just say nothing.
Exactly.
In, in my opinion, all they did was solicit the resumes, or correct if I'm wrong, po, I'm sorry, posted out to every sort of school committee thing, website, superintendent's website, this is what they told us, solicit and collect and review resumes, and then send them on to us, assuming that they felt that the person checked all the boxes.
Right, they made sure.
And then we decided, and we looked them over, and decided which ones we're going to move to the next step. They kind of just, Dorothy, she kind of just was, you know, here as a chair, and I couldn't say, I can't use the word chair, but.
Sometimes she tried to get the meeting going a little bit faster.
Super, yeah, she was just facilitating the meeting, that's, that's the word I'm looking for. But no care, no, that's what we got.
Oh, no, I just wanted to, um. Goodness, um, Cheryl, okay, so I just wanted to add, um, and I'm sure you're all thinking the same thing, you know, when I hear MASC say we want to define, so of course, what we're thinking in the process is the plan to map out a strategic plan and a plan, you know, what, what is the plan to help out this very important action management person, superintendent, so, you know, who's going to be, you know, in charge of the committee, of course, we'll talk about that, but, you know, what are the, what's the timeline, what are the goals, and to set everything into a map, this will be began to be organized.
I, I mean, I think that's probably, I mean, I definitely need timelines, and I think, I think this, it's kind of a good template to work off of, all these specific dates are going to change a little bit, but, um, I think that part of the process is a relatively easy part of the process, because unfortunately, we've done it twice in five years, um, so we at least have a background of it. And then the real question is, are we able to spread that, are we able to disseminate that information, and hopefully, where can we disseminate it so we can build a, a pretty good group again?
It's a noticeable, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, I think Melanie had brought this to our attention the last time we gathered, uh, during the summer. Minutemen decided to go the RFP route and put out an RFP just for search consultants. I have no idea how that's going, I don't personally tend to think that's necessary, we might have interesting experiment going on here, whether their process would go any differently, or more, more efficiently. Um, I think, my tendency is to think that the nature of the vocational openings limits the tools by nature to begin with, therefore, there's less for any consultants to do, um, particularly this particular go-around. So, I mean, I'm sort of personally open to the idea, um, and people's experience and their frustrations seems to call for taking control of it, and particularly of, again, the folks that are within the operation, who are probably going to wind up fielding some of the day-to-day questions and procedures, et cetera, and doing the communicating with Howard, et cetera, as long as everybody's up for that, it should be workable.
Yes.
So, um, having experienced the superintendent's search from a couple of different angles, Bob and I did one, we're members of the Wilmington School Committee, when we did one years ago, uh, together, um, I can tell you that in this particular case, the process is secondary to where, where a search fails is if you don't attract the right candidates, period. The process is, is simple, and is fairly straightforward, and does need to be facilitated, and needs to be, you need to have somebody to run it and keep people on schedule, you need to decide how inclusionary you want the process to be, um, do you want to, um, you know, you have, do you want to have this open to the world, study your navel, decide what we want for our next superintendent? Or do you want to cut and paste the old, um, you know, they're pretty generic, but not crazy requirements from your old, um, pamphlet? The, the, um, the process itself, uh, needs to be conducted, part of it has to be done privately, the screening has to be done privately, and then the, and the interviews of semi-finalists is traditionally done privately in, um, in executive session by either this committee or by a search committee, and then when finalists are named, then it becomes public. So the process, Howard, can help you through that in terms of the open meeting law. Um, one of the advantages here of having an interim or a semi-interim superintendent is that, um, you know, I'm not trying to, um, uh, maintain my legacy here by, by impacting a search in a particular direction. Um, I, I want, I just want the, the, the next superintendent to be successful, and the school to continue to be successful, um, so I probably couldn't have been helpful to the Holliston people after being there for sixteen years, um, in, in, in helping them find their next superintendent, because I had internal candidates that I was supporting, et cetera. But here, I think, uh, you know, you could, you can get some objectivity from me and from Howard, um, I do think that, um, the process, as I said, is very, is really pretty straightforward, you kind of define your, what you're looking for, um, the process itself about getting, seeking applications and doing the screening and all that stuff, you folks just need to basically decide if you're going to do all of that yourself, or if you're going to have a representative group of this committee, or parent, and/or parents, representatives of parents, representatives of teachers, which is where you started to kind of lose some control over the situation last time. Having said that, I would ask you to consider, not out loud, but consider to yourself those people who were part of it, if the process were better, given the candidate that you had last time, would that search have been successful? And, um, I don't know the answer to that, because I don't know who applied, but, um, I, I do think you, the most important part of the superintendent's search is recruitment, period, and particularly in the CBTE world, which, as Brian said, is a very small, it, I mean, the, the pond is very small of superintendent and superintendent candidates, the CBTE world is even smaller. And, um, uh, so I really, um, I think, um, I think this can be done, I think this committee can do it, I think essentially, your biggest question that you have to answer is, are you going to have a representative group do it, or as the elected officials elected to represent the five communities, are the ten of you going to do it? Do the screening, read all the resumes, sit down together and take all the resumes and turn them into twelve people you want to interview, conduct those twelve interviews, and then select five finalists, and then announce those finalists, and then make that process pro, uh, public from then on. Typically, the, the finalist process, regardless of whether you use a, a group or not, is only done by the school committee. The screening committee would take, would give you five, you know, three to, your, your charge to them, if you used the representative group, would say, give us three to five finalists.
Hope we get, uh, the answer.
Right.
You'll get five, ten, I, I would, I would like to think, and I would agree with you a hundred percent, that, I think the, the, the proof to this thing is you'll be in the process, and if you don't attract quality candidates, then the process is flawed from the outset. And having said that, I would like to think this is still a pretty, in the, in the CBTE world, I like to think this is still a pretty clever job.
It is.
This is still a pretty successful institution.
It is.
As far as.
I've had calls, I've had, I have had a number of calls personally, asking about the process, when is it going to get started?
I think based on, I'm recruiting, let me tell you, I think historically, I think that it would, would need, to me, seem to be catastrophic, to have, to have any more than three months on this search committee. I think part of the problem last time is we had five committee members on the subcommittee, so by the time the finalists got here, everybody had an opinion as to the finalists, or, and I mentioned the other ten people, and, and that was a pretty, for lack of a better phrase, that was a pretty unruly group, and I think that's what, and I don't mean that, you know, I don't mean.
Difficult to manage.
Yes.
Because I think, and that's where the process fails, and I think we, a hot term right place, we tried to be as inclusive as we could have, uh, I think even internally in this building, we were over-inclusive, and I think it's imperative that we have, uh, a vocational member on, on that subcommittee from the building, um, and maybe somebody from the academic outside, I don't know, I mean, I think that, to me, that would be a must for the subcommittee.
Yeah, I'm going to look at it a little differently, because it was unwraven. I would, just.
Hold on, hold on, Ken, uh, Pat is speaking.
We definitely couldn't have all ten members, I mean, some, some do have all their members, but we can't do that, because once we get the resumes, then that's an open meeting.
Correct. You can do that in executive session.
Yeah, I would, but, uh, but we could have five, and I know, I don't know if the five members were unruly, I understand.
I, I just think, uh.
No, I know, but I try to understand.
Unruly.
By, by the time, by the, by, et cetera, but I didn't, I didn't, by the time we did get to the finals, we had already gone through, too, but actually, it gave us a little bit of an insight, because when somebody interviewed me at the end, all of us changed our mind, because it was a totally different interview, and they had an interview of a lot of people, you know, more than, you know, our, had the final interview.
And the committee, the site visits weren't helpful either, I felt very unhelpful.
Okay. May I respectfully say that we, in this meeting, we decide one thing at a time.
Right.
Agree on whether or not we're using MASC, then we discuss the size of the committee, then we discuss the process.
All right, I think we've already decided we are not using MASC. That's correct, yeah.
Does that have to be a favorable motion, or do you want to?
Sue's right.
Say that again, Ken?
Oh, I just said, is it, I have a comment, just a, what's on the spot, said.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think at the last meeting, I think we talked about how, you know, I think that was going to be important to establish, like, you know, I think that's the number one thing we need to do, I don't know if that's going to be decided tonight, which is basically to, you know, establish a certain committee, who's going to be, who's going to chair and office the committee, and be like, you know, do who that person's going to be, and then I think that's the number one thing to get decided, and then, you know, we talked about the detail, you know, the strategic plan, I mean, that's the important person, you know, that's going to get very important position that person's going to be on, so, you know, creating strategic plan and figuring out what the makeup of the committee's going to be, you know, kind of like the rest, going to, and all we did last time, you know, whether that's to go with the MASC right, or, you know, do our own, I'm kind of like, we're going to make that decision right now, I mean, we can say that, but I think it's like establish chair for this committee, that's the number one thing, who's going to be, that's what we need to decide, as a committee, is basically who that person, I mean, I mean, I love to tuck it up there, but.
No, I wouldn't.
I, I, but I'm going to disagree with you, I think we can right off the bat decide if we want to use MASC or not.
Mr. Yarz.
And we, I think we already did, I don't know, if you think we need to take a vote, I will certainly take a vote.
The chair of that.
Take a vote.
They have to be legal?
Sure, we can get legal.
I don't think, I don't, I don't think there's any need to.
I don't either, that's actually, but people want to.
There's no legal presumption.
Right. But people want to.
Okay, that's fine. But if people want to, because there's no motion at the table, so.
Right, I made a motion that we have a search committee that is not using MASC to guide them, to lead them.
Okay.
Right.
Of course.
Right. We're not going to be using as a consultant.
We're not going to be using as a consultant.
All right, Nancy, what's your vote?
Yes.
Chris Ken, what's your vote?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Chris? Ken?
I, I can't vote yet, because I don't know if we can actually, we're voting, I don't know if we can.
We're voting not to use MASC for our search consultant.
I, I don't know how we can really rule that out, because a lot of members are new, and we're just going off base, and I'm not saying MASC is the best, MASC is the, is the, uh, you know, is the right option, I'm just saying myself, I'm relatively new, I can't rule that out, I don't know if that's, it's a really tough job, I mean, it's hard to say, I would say that, um, if you want to establish a committee from a strategic plan and then decide that, I mean, I guess.
All right, do you want to raise a stand?
I'll say.
Okay.
But I'm making a amendment to my health care.
Sure.
Oh, oh, am I on?
Yes, what's your amendment?
And then the motion.
Oh, my gosh, I'm on, um, I'm going to say, uh, that we should start initially with, um, our own, with only using MASC as a resource, with the option if necessary to use higher consultants, that won't be any problem with the.
Okay, that's fine, I agree with you, that's fine, I was going to say. All right.
But I think that should be something discussed with the full committee, because this is a lot of money as well, so I think that something with the full committee is.
Well, it would be, that would be. Well, it would be, that would be a full committee discussion. It would be a full committee discussion if we had, if we had to go back to MASC. All right, Brian?
Well, a motion as amended?
Yes.
All right, because I think you've already had some people vote on the motion.
I know.
So...
I'll go back to that.
Why don't we ask which will withdraw her motion, stop it?
All right, what, amended one?
Well, hers.
Originally, I would, I would draw mine. All right, I would draw my motion in favor of Nancy's motion.
Okay.
Now, what do you want me to...
Now, Nancy, we're voting on the amended, uh... The emoji. So, will you vote on your amended?
Which what?
Motion.
We definitely...
Are we starting again?
We can go on, but we maintain the right vote.
Got it.
Chris?
Yeah.
Ken, are you still in that extension?
Oh, oh, yes, I agree, I agree with Nancy's amendment.
Okay.
I agree.
All right. Brian?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Well?
Yes.
And I vote yes, unless anybody?
Don't, you don't.
All right.
So, your step is done.
Step one, done.
Step one is done.
All right, unanimous vote. All right, now let's think about the search process, and...
May I ask a question of clarification, just because I don't remember, we have fifteen members last time around, five were a full committee, what were the other ten?
Five were, five were supposed to be community members, and five were school members, included admin, teachers, et cetera.
Oh, it was teachers as well as admin staff, okay.
Yes.
And was, was the union representative?
Yes.
Yes, it was. And just though I understand Karen is at all meeting, but she is not considered a staff vote, that's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure, all right.
And I'll probably be there, but I'm not...
But again, you don't vote. All right.
So, now, but at this time, members will be in...
Well, that's, you cannot, can I see? All right, I would like to discuss what I felt went, well, not really what went wrong with the search process, but what I would do differently. I, I really liked Taryn's idea about, like a Survey Monkey, sending out questionnaires to all of the staff, all of the parents, all of, you know, all of the admin, and getting information back, what they are looking for. I do not necessarily think that we need anyone else on this committee. If you only think you need three school committee members, I would go for that, but I think as soon as you bring others in, it just became, I mean, it became, they asked questions that really didn't have anything to do with the search, you know, and we got a little personal at times, so, good job.
I kind of agree with you, I guess the question would be, you know, who's two other people, if Bob had mentioned someone from the vote side here?
Right.
Would you at least still want something like that, because, I don't know about myself, but I would think someone from that side would know a lot about the vote, so if you had candidates in here that are trying to battle, or you do get a one, or she, you'd get a one that would know if they're coming to school, or just trying to work through it, instead of, not that we need a whole bunch, I think one, two.
Not having been on the committee the previous time, but I would think we'd do something in between no one and five, so maybe three, two or three school committee members, two or three school, um, members of the staff, somebody paid by the school, and two or three community members who are not paid by the school and are not school committee members. And if we don't have an interest from all three groups, we don't have to go to three, it's not, if only me and Rod are interested in being on the school committee, we're gonna bully Bob until he says he'll do it. I mean, I'm making it up, because obviously, that wouldn't happen, but, you know, if we don't have the interest in one group, that's okay.
And I think, honestly, I think that's, oh, um, I generally agree with what Taryn just said, I might suggest different numbers, and I'd be concerned about a process that just eliminates the other groups, the community, staff.
It wouldn't really eliminate them, I think we brought their voices.
I think you want, you need to get the voice, and Survey Monkey is a tool for that on a broad basis, but I, I think the ultimate committee probably should have some composition beyond the school committee, but maybe, maybe the ratios would be very different, like, we school committee, one community, one staff, or what?
See, I think maybe smaller, that's what I was looking at, or...
Yeah, those, that fifteen thing. I thought, I think part of the problems with that last, you know, so I used the word unruly, I mean, part of the problems with the process last time, is by the time this committee, meaning all candidates, brought those candidates for final interviews, there really weren't too many pre-vote candidates, because most of these subcommittee people were highly fast on what they wanted, and I think that's why, from the perspective of the entire committee, it may be a good idea to limit the number instead of five, make it two up with, but also limit the number of other people and limit to what we need. And I think, I agree with Charlie, I think somebody, some vocational side is...
I actually do, I just, the other side completely...
And I just think that person has to be somebody who's coming in, this is, that's how it's designed, you know, of all, I mean, that, I mean, there are probably people, we already have the office conference in on working with that, but you just have to find your way in, and I think academically, you're probably need somebody from the same group.
And I would also suggest that whoever chairs this committee, which I would not make a problem, but whoever chairs this committee, if you want, would also decide on who was gonna be on the committee, because I had no idea what we needed for all these people, and that most of them were teachers, you know, that it wasn't me. I did not know that, you know, I wasn't involved in that at all.
Well, I think...
I'm sorry, Ken, did you say you think the chair should select the members of the committee?
Well, yes, I think that, you know, we ask people, you know, if they're interested, but then the final decision, I think, should be the chair.
I don't understand that, how are we gonna get equity if it all comes from one person? They could get stacked in one direction, I'm just playing devil's advocate, you know?
Well, let's say we ask...
I'm not just, I'm like, if there's a master.
Okay, well, I, I would say, it was done very differently the last time. It was done, I believe the chair, yeah, so people sent letters and requested, and the chair did decide. The chair of the regular school.
Chair of the school committee.
Yeah, the top school.
Oh, well, 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 I gather that at the time, pick committee. Might be the idea, if there's two or three members, well, that could be, so, pick the elements, pick the elements. Yeah, that way you've got input from not just one person.
All right.
Yeah.
So, if I, if I could suggest, I, I know the committee was frustrated with a committee of thousands, and I think, I just wanna caution you from letting the pendulum swing too far in the other direction, you do wanna make sure you've got voices, so, to me, what I'm hearing is something that might work out, is like a nine-member, I'm thinking nine, three school committee members, three employees, three parents. And employees, you can have a vote, vote member, an academic member, and an administrator, I would recommend an administrator, not me, or not a member of the central office, so, someone, the principal, or someone in that office over there. And then three parents chosen by the three school committee members who are in the committee. And I, I think that can give you some broad consent, broad group, nine is fairly manageable, particularly if they are parents and not, and not employees who also have kids who go to school here, who will, you know, who also have kids who go to school here, but are really coming at it from the, you know, from the record's perspective, or the Cooksbury perspective, or the Wilmington, or the Bedford, or the Wilmington perspective, so... From the last process, I think the most unbiased people in that group were the parents. They traditionally are. The gentleman from, is he that, the gentleman from, very good gentleman. Really? He's from, Bill Rick, I'm sorry, I mean, the people, like, Carl, the people who have the less contact on a daily basis at school are the most objective. And so I, I would, actually, I would agree with you, I think that's a good idea.
Is there, Charlie was gonna say something?
No, you're gonna say, please, you're gonna get the current order of the pool, you know, where you can screen and make sure it's not awful teachers? I think that out there, if I'm wondering, because it's supposed to be a concern. No, because then, I'm probably gonna have to say, shat in the back, if you know, Kevin.
Um, it's three, three counties, uh, there's a possibility that more than one person represents a particular town, and another town might not have any representatives. Uh, for equity's sake, I hate to see three people from Bedford on and nobody from Newark on, you know what I'm saying?
Sure. I think, I think that would be the ultimate decision of the committee members you put on, so I, I don't think that would happen, I think that's kind of what the checks and balances would be before.
No, I hope that would be the case, there are politics at home.
I know.
I think that, um, I'm carrying along, that the devil's advocate, I was, that interest, by the way, um, in DMC, and, um, and one of the most important things you do as school committee members is that one thing, that's very, very, very important thing, and I personally would want someone from Burlington on the school, on the search committee, not necessarily myself, but I would want my non-representative through school committee, um, and I would assume that the other town that has that, you know, the school committee representation would want to be on that same committee search, so, my personal thought would be that each town should have a representative on their search committee, with, um, two people from the admin side, two people from the parent side, or school, two people from the school side, and people from the parent side, have people have the school committee, um, because I would not want, like, I would want my town representative, and then, guys, or committee members, um, like, who, who would not have the school committee members, like, that would not be, like, I think, that's a voter, as a parent, as, like, you know, as a chair, as a community.
So, are you saying you wanted the five members of the school committee on that? Is that what you mean?
Thank you, that's something, someone who is very little representative, so, I do understand, um, that there would want two or three towns to be represented, and so, or everybody would want their town representative in here, um, just around, uh...
So, so one way, one way, one way to affect that is that you'll have three school committee members who are, hopefully, will be from three different communities, and those folks would be tasked to select at least two of the parents from two of the communities that are not represented by the school committee, so that you have a citizen voter from every community on the screening committee, of, and that way, so, if you've got a Wilmington, Bedford, Burlington school committee members on there, you get Cooksbury, Bill Rick of parents, as, as, you know, we get two of the, one Burlington parent, one, you know, to round it off, and then the sixth one would just kind of go at random or whatever, but just to kind of even it out, you can make sure there's representation for each town on a committee with, for example, three school committee members and three parents, and three Shashi Tech employees. I was actually, you just, but everybody, every time, in one, in some way, in the other.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with Brad's point, and it's a way of, of, we, the boss point, you know, that was, as I said, people said last time, but I think he has a nice, too, like, that's a big part, part of the first unit, is the chair of the subcommittee, also screen everybody, you know, the process, basically, and, you know, there's gonna be some people that are in conflict, like, conflicts, and there isn't, or rolling out people that, like, you know, um, you know, they're coming with, like, race, or fish kits and stuff, or, you wanna, a lot of that stuff, so I think that's a good thing, process of the chair of the committees, kind of, you know, establishing the right people to be on the search, to make them, but also the people, you know, there to be one, you know, helping to screen candidates for that to the actual committee.
I think once we get the number of committee members down, I'm pretty confident that that group, in, once this group decides what the total number will be, I'm confident that the committee members, the three, we pick three, the three committee members, can successfully, if we want to remain there, search the room based on criteria established by, we have, I think that's, I mean, I'm pretty confident that's not, not...
Oh, yes, I wanted to add one more suggestion, so, you know, I really like to grab, you know, knock out, you know, the balance, you know, from my school, you know, vocational, someone from the administrative staff, and one from academics. I know Karen's gonna be heavily involved in a lot of the planning of the interviews, and, you know, personally, I don't think it's similar, like, you know, with your experience, Karen, and knowing that the supervisors for all these years, would it be possible, or completely be interested, and be part of the interview process, just to kind of give, you know, an idea, or give your more opinion, in view of some of the candidates? Oh, I don't know if that's something I...
I don't know that I would wanna be part of the interview process, but I would like to have my five minutes with each candidate, like I did with the other, if I need my, pardon me?
Very valuable.
Yes, very, very. You worked with some...
Yes, Karen, we'd love that.
I'm still working, I'm convinced, I'm not gonna... We're gonna get ten minutes, depending how it turns out, it's a bargain, Patty, I hope it plays smooth, because I know we went down a road last time, and nobody jumped out, and I, I was just, the last couple days, thinking about this whole thing, yeah, all that time and effort, and all the phone calls I made, and all the visits, like, nothing happened, so, I'm, I'm hoping, well, we have a big, I'm confident, yes, okay.
Well, I think, to one's point, one of the things, and I think something, picked up from reading the materials, um, when we get to that timeline, then, then one of the most important things that, in these procedures, is having a, what they call it, a turnaround point, that if you're not producing at the initial stage, you know, because, oh wonderful when resumes come in and all that, and then sometimes, you have to make a decision, do we, seem like we have a strong enough pool, then we'll be in pretty good shape when we get, as we refine it, or is it more of a, uh-oh, the pool isn't even big enough, so that as we lose people along the way, by our choice, their choice, and we are, the reality is, there's another school district just down the road, conducting a very similar process along a very, almost exactly the same timeline ultimately, so, we have to take that into consideration, so, hopefully, if the committee is structured, and then has its guidelines, part of the timeframe of having a point at which, wait a minute, if we don't have the right numbers, the general approach may need to change, or a, a second round, a second facilitation, or whatever it have to be, and then how, how do you manage that, so that it's not disrespectful to the people that are already put in, but it's realistic based on where you're at that moment, because you've seen what happens, if it doesn't go well at that point.
This is me wanting to involve someone, not really involved. Because when we, um, actually superintendent for those, not of us, except for, new of our members, who knew what was going on, nobody, and so a day we were interviewing, that really bothered me. I, I don't know, I, I think this is probably not possible, but I would like all of us to be able to see all of the resumes right after that.
Thank you. Thank you.
So that, my, my recommendation.
We made too many mistakes in the past, and anything we can do to help facilitate success.
What did you say?
To take a little more effort on our part, I think we should do all we can do.
My own, my, my recommendation would be, that's a question you need to ask Howard, about public records and about, um, about the open meeting law and about, um, whether or not, you know, that's permissible in the most, too much, in place.
Why would you, why would you do that if you're basically, kind of, everybody in the commission reviewed all the resumes? What's the purpose of having a search committee? Basically does that for the students to, to get, that's, that's, it's, it's.
The head was in control.
You know, I think that there has to be, honestly, I'm not going to go back into the other search, but the other search, because I always said in start, but I think somewhere along the line, there has to be some good faith, you know, based on this group right here, that the process is going to work. And honestly, I don't, I don't think it didn't work last time. I don't think, I don't, I'm not offended that I didn't try and do those people, because honestly, I think there are people in that group, under different search chances, that wouldn't have been successful there. They just didn't get the vote, and I think that, I think that whole problem stems from the fact that, that some community was just so fractured, by the time they came into the public, nobody could, while it was political, um, it wouldn't be honest with you, but I, I don't.
It's not that I wanted to interview them, I just, I wanted to see the resume, to, to what went because.
Why is why is why is there, I think, we're not going to have a vote.
Yeah, because what happens, you know, I think if everybody looked at the resume from last time, they would think, oh, now I get it. I know why, you know.
And I think that you can ask that with that person, I'm just not sure that's possible, because you're making the whole process basically fucked, for the whole thing. Now, you just want to hit that person right there, and not really, some community, it's like.
I, I, I can't, I have to tell you one thing, that, um, as the only person in this room probably who had been as, who was an applicant, if, if the, if the process, if the applicant does not have 100% trust that their name will not be made public unless and until they are a finalist, they will not apply. You will lose good candidates if they don't trust the process, and I, I can't emphasize that enough. That is a certain, and I, um, and I've been in that seat, um, it is very terrifying as a sitting superintendent to apply for another superintendency and pray that they, that your community doesn't find out that you're being disloyal and looking for another job. So, that is, you have to, I mean, so, if you can do it in a way that doesn't impact the confidentiality of the search, I think that could be something you could consider, but to me, the confidentiality of the search, if you cannot, if, if there is one iota of concern out in the community about the confidentiality of the search, you will, you, good candidates will run away from it.
So here's my other suggestion. I would rather get even more school committee members than, like, we have three school committee members to manage two, um, school people. Only that, so the number of school committees.
Great school committee members, two of them.
Right. So it's not even, but you can.
Okay. Great school committee members, but two of them, two, not, two points.
Two points.
Four points.
And two parents.
I think that would be.
The two parents have been on the other community.
That's a very good one. And that could be close to the punch, just after, now, let's see, this particular time, you just got to cross the process. And if it doesn't, if, at the end, if it comes back to the table, then you say, you get that, you know, it is what it is. But I think, you also have to trust that some communities could do, what Brian suggested, at some point in time, go through the resumes and have an interview.
Yeah, I always say, I don't, we don't.
You gotta hit the reset.
I agree, Brian, I would like the subcommittee to go through that and discuss it, because I didn't think that took place last time, discussing what's going on, like, you know, I got, I got this candidate here, and, you know, that's what I'm saying, and I, I think I'm totally with you on that, let's, you know, talk about these candidates and say, you know, I think this might be the first, and hypothetically, Brian goes, no, I'm gonna, you know, we argue about it, I don't know, give and take, I thought there was a lot, but so, let's just talk about.
I think it's also easier with a smaller group, you know, systematically decide who's going to vote, I think that would also kind of, everybody got a day to live, and ended up with, yeah, two, five, itself.
I actually have a process, I have a process that I use that is full proof, selecting several. It basically makes everybody's picture top five, you have to vote for five, and whoever they need to be on.
Then they added somebody.
So, well, whatever, you have a, you have a conversation, and then.
But that's basically what we did, we did not, everybody picked their top five, and then you never had to.
So, and I, the other piece, once you get a committee, this committee needs to decide what is, what is its charge to that committee, what are its instructions? So, like, for example, we want a minimum of three finalists and no more than five finalists. That's what I initially, and I, you know, like, when I did the search for the Director of Special Education, that's what I said to the screening committee, here's the, here's the candidate, here's the, here are the resumes, give me three to five finalists, can't give me three, I don't want, then, I don't want, I don't want two, because you're going to lose one, and I want to be able to make the decision, and I don't want it to be somebody else drops out, and I'm kind of left with, with left, um, or, and five, they're not being particular enough, more than five. So that's what I, I think, you have to decide, that's another thing you have to ultimately decide, is what is your charge for this?
So, I always, and I think what you just said goes back to what Brian said, if you can't bring me, I think we should tell the subcommittee, if you can't bring us three people that you could go for, then perhaps you should leave it at the front. You can bring us five, if you think you have five strong candidates, but, and I, I think that'd be great, to get, bring us no more than, no less than three, no more than five.
Fred, you made a comment earlier about making sure that the total candidates will not, will, will the best, will be the important part.
Yes.
How do you do that?
Um, well, you do that, um, by, um, networking. Um, school committee members are going to, um, the joint conference in November, you have your Chashin badge on, and you, um, talk to other school committee members from other districts, and say, hey, we're looking for a superintendent, do you got any hot coming administrators that you might recommend? Um, I've already told some of the folks at Chashin that they should be talking to their peers, I'm talking to MAPPA, which is the, um, the, uh, the Vocational Administrators Association, and I'm talking to Chashin, um, so it's about networking, and not, not calling people you know, but talking to everybody and saying, Chashin's a great place to work, got a great committee, we've got a great, um, five great communities, we're full to the brim, everybody, kids want to go here, which, by the way, is not all true, and a lot of other schools are, one of our main competitors does, has a much different problem, they don't, for superintendents, they're not full. Um, that, you know, us being full and having a waiting list is actually, that somebody wanting to work here would see that as, okay, that's, that's a, that's an exciting part of the job. So, that's how, I, in my opinion, that's how you do it, you talk to your colleagues, um, you know, you talk in, in school committees, um, and, and, you know, in the, um, you know, you're, what do you call the groups of MASC, that you're part of, the, the district.
District eight.
District eight meetings, and, um, you just talk, and we talk up Chashin.
Fred, do you get your social DM at all in spring, or, you know, posting that the job is available?
Well, it'll be posted on School Spring, and, and MASC has a web, they put it on their website, MASS, with Mass Association of School Superintendent, puts it on theirs, and they'll, they'll, um, we, you know, I'll send out an email to all superintendents in Massachusetts saying there's an opening, um, MAPPA, which is the, it's, it's, it's Vocational Administrators Association, they'll forward the information to their mailing list, um, so it, it gets, it gets out there.
I don't think there'd be any, so, I mean, this is, that's a pretty small, small group, especially in MAPPA groups, there'd not be any.
They know.
There's not going to be any confusion about the job openings. But I think what you said is, is probably the most important thing that I, I think the process has to be, at, at least if you're outside, I think these people have to be confident with their resumes and be able to talk this, because I think there are probably young, capable administrators that might want to apply for this job, because I think, I think that people have to be convinced of the process, and, and if they're going to stick their neck out for this job, I think they have to be convinced that the process is fair, the total thing, and they have the finished job, and that's, otherwise, they're going to wait till they get fired, you just exactly, you said, they're going to wait till they're fired, first, after they.
How do we do that?
I think that's what Brad said, he's, he really, one thing we've never done personally is go out and speak to the MAPPA people and tell them that he's, he's part of the business, and anybody's got their favorites, I, I would never actually done that before, and I think that's actually great, somebody speak to someone at MAPPA and say, you know, this is your, the other head of MAPPA, and you must go along the vocational, because he's up, he's, he's up, who, who can we look at potentially, could be up superintently, beyond the exception, Charlie is the exception, who can we look at is potentially, we get some.
Right.
So, honestly, I think that should be the goal of the school, finding somebody who's going to settle in here, because others have been affected by the last seven years, and it's.
Yeah. And I think that, if that's one of your criteria, that should be in.
I actually, I really thought that should be in the group.
That you're looking for a long-term commitment.
Yeah, that would.
But, you have to have.
Long-term commitment would be.
Long-term commitments go both ways, so when you're writing a contract to this person, they're going to expect one in return.
I, I think a lot, seriously, if they were candid, I feel, I'm sure that, I mean, they were committed to stay there, I mean, the interviews were good, and I just looked at them, decided that they were here and go, let it drop.
I don't know. You didn't want us to be a stepping stone.
Yes, well, not even a stepping stone, this, what exactly, no, but I just figured they were looking for wins, I mean, if something else, better came on, and that's not what I was looking for.
Which is interesting, because, I mean, we were paying very well, we always paid very well.
I think that, I mean, just, well, I mean, I think, I know, I think the shine wears off after, probably, a hundred more.
Well, yeah.
New England School of Law was paying extraordinarily well, and then their guy gave up after eight months, so, it's like paying a ridiculous amount of money to an unqualified person.
You won?
What's that?
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not, I was very mad at him.
I am, I'm very mad at him.
I am, too.
I was mad at him.
I know, I know you got.
I was mad at him when they hired him.
I know, I was like, what?
It's a good example of, like, maybe something you could perceive that's probably not about the job, it's about the person's personal circumstances, or maybe their spouse or their kids, or, what's not about.
So, just, I don't want to leave that point, you also, MASC would also be in here telling you, you have to be careful about, if, you know, anti-discrimination laws, and, and, you know, you have to be an equal opportunity employer, and, um, so, and I know no one is saying anything contrary to that at this table, but just those, those conversations can creep in, but you don't care if somebody's 16, if they're going to give you 10 years, you just want to give you 10 years. So, but, you know, we just have to be careful about how we describe possible candidates who might meet that criteria, so I didn't get that wrong.
But do we give direction to the subcommittee as far as what we're looking for, as far as internal, external, as far as vocational versus general? Um, do we do that, or do they have somebody doing that on their own?
I think the location, all the specs will be on the, for the flyer.
Yeah, we have a brochure that we use the last time, and we'll pretty much follow it, yes.
I was wondering, um, we have this. So that somebody knows what we're looking for.
Right.
And then they decide to fly. Do they just send in their resume, or do we have, like, questions that they have to answer? And if we have questions, is the candidate without inadvertently seeming discriminatory, ask them about their thoughts on a 10-year commitment?
You can ask them to, to serve a lot of interest, specifically indicating why they want the job, which hopefully they answer the question.
Yeah. It's like, you know, because, like you said, you know, if somebody's like, you know, if the way they answer the question could tell us, like you were saying, this person is just looking for a couple of years until they get to retirement, to their wife's retirement, to their husband's retirement, to their, I don't know.
You're all closer home.
Yes, just on, on, on the same line, um, you know, if we send out the survey monkey, and we're asking the teachers or the parents to send that, you know, what are they looking for in superintendent? Do you feel as though we'll wait for that data to come back and then take another look at the pamphlet and maybe update it with some of those criteria that they're looking for?
I have already written questions that you guys obviously can critique, so I would love to see the survey go out in the next couple weeks, you know, before the teachers are busy getting their kids, um, ready, you know, getting themselves ready for the year, before the parents are busy getting their kids out the door. I made the ques, I specifically made it short and simple.
I don't think that.
I think, I think we did do something.
I wasn't here, I'm a candidate.
We did something about, we said, like, that was something.
I don't remember.
The survey sent it out.
I do think that that's a great idea, if, if you're going to solicit that input to the survey monkey, that those responses you gather before, that's, in the actual process.
Yeah. Because I'll tell you from other, um, aspects of my life, if you give a survey and you jump on an NDA, say, you know, we need this information back by August 34th, that sense of urgency, they go, oh, I got this today, I should answer it today. No, 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 three weeks, I'll put it away and then forget about it. So.
When we're ready, I can show the questions I came up with, that you guys can have.
No, are your, like, open text, or is it, um, full?
Yes.
Yes.
Two questions for people that do this, um, the first, uh, probably easier, is to, have you had a, a mechanism that if somebody's wanted to, even before actually sending in an application, wanted to reach out and be able to communicate with somebody either within the school, or on the search committee, or on the school committee, a mechanism by which he or she could do so, because it strikes me, fish on fifty, trying that, if someone is a, say, middle-tier administrator or whatever, at Monty CAC, they don't, may not want them ever to put in an N.
they don't, may not want them ever to put in an extra resume unless they have a chance to get a feel by talking to somebody confidentially about, is this really an opening? You don't, you know, is it not just an inside bag job? Or are you guys really open? Or, you know, whatever the case may be, somebody wants to have that kind of dialogue. Has there been a mechanism in the past for allowing for that? Um, because I can see it benefits.
It's not handmade, it's directly pressed into sort of that purpose of this.
As it says here, do not, um, which is very traditional. Um, for further information contact at ASC, do not contact screaming members of members of the administration. I personally think that's a mistake. Um, and when I, I mean, I didn't do a lot of searching, I only did two, where I went sixteen years. But I always called superintendent and asked, who was their inside candidate? And, uh, when I was told that it was inside candidate, um, and I said, is that candidate competitive? And I go, yes, I'm in the box.
I think, and I think that's the correct thing. I think what's gonna happen, Brian, is I think a lot of people that are in the pool who apply for these jobs or are screening up, if they don't know somebody themselves, they know somebody who does. Uh, and that person already make that call for that candidate saying, is this actually an open job? And I would agree with you, Brad. I probably wouldn't put that comment in there, although I don't think anybody can, if you're gonna, of course, you would call it in as a subcommittee member. But I think if somebody was interested in knowing if it was a quote, open search and it wasn't an inside candidate, I think that they're gonna find somebody that's gonna be in the end. And hopefully, we're gonna put out the impression from the outset that it isn't an open search. We, we don't have a choice, we don't.
Could we have a school committee member who is not on the subcommittee prepared to field phone calls so that, uh, Brian is that person? Brian gets the call from Mr. Fusco, interested? Brian answers Mr. Fusco's questions honestly, but the fact that Mr. Fusco asked those questions is never shared with the superintendent search committee. It's confidential, right? Like, could we do that? Since we're only having three members on the actual subcommittee, could there be a fourth person who was? I don't know.
That is quite, quite. I don't understand.
Oh, I'm just going to ask that, you can tell me.
There's further information content, don't depress us, I like, oh, we can put something named that.
But the CVTE world is very small. I agree, and they, if they don't know me, they'll know Dave Norwood's or they'll know Jess Cook or they'll know a teacher here, uh, and they will get the answers to the question. They, and if they can't, then you don't want them anyhow because they're not connected enough in the CVTE world.
I was just gonna say.
They can't figure that out.
Good point.
Well, that changes the question, the second question, which, so it deals with, with people. The core of the potential candidate pool, with people in vocational world, Massachusetts, maybe still over the border or maybe not, mixed feelings, thoughts there. Um, but then there's this, there's the, the smaller world of internal candidates for whom you always have to be shown respect and thinking about how you deal with that and all of that. You've been through that process. And then there's the, oh, we will post this notice on some national conference linked site for people. And if there's some dung hole person in Minnesota who's always wanted to move back to Massachusetts and want a vocational school, he or she will know about it, just in case, problems will happen. I, I don't know if, if that has even been dealing with MASC the last time, was that even a topic of consideration? Whether you wanted, and believe, I think, every school district I attended, no law of the nation is paid all the time. They had wonderful examples of people coming from the outside and then there's so, there's plenty of examples of, oh, no, we know why you didn't want to be there and why anyone, so, um.
Or they wanted.
Oh, they want, right, right. So I, I just raised that as a question or is, but you're gonna have to have sensitivity to both directions. Uh, both with the, on the internal and then, oh, Massachusetts will generate a really small pool. Should we be looking broader? Or if somebody here sees the ad and has his brother-in-law or sister-in-law from out of state, contact us and say, hey. Yeah, I, I mean, I think you have to trust the screening committee to, to ask the right questions. And, and, you know, I think, I, I hired a, I've hired, I hired a principal from North Carolina who's, who's now a superintendent. And, um, and I hired one from Massachusetts who I let go a year later. So, uh, not in, not neither of here, but I'm, I'm saying that, you know, that's, there may be a good candidate in Minnesota. Who knows? I, I traditionally don't want a lot.
Maybe it's just in the first person. Some people are really into having a lot of these superintendents.
And vice versa, probably.
And I think what is.
Do you have any out-of-state candidates for long-term?
I don't think so, no.
No.
We can advertise in the national publication, it's not fair.
Don't get it out. And again, the same sensitivity to the local and the, the internal.
What, son? What did you say?
Other parts of the country are more, um, into, well, education than, than the, the regular.
I'm not so sure, and other parts are much less. Brad, I would say much less in other parts of the country.
I'm sorry?
I think it's much less in other parts of the country.
Well, I thought when I was in Texas, it was quite a bit, but I'm pretty wrong.
It's a big country, I'm sure there's some states with more and some states with less.
So, so is the committee kind of circling the ball on a seven-member search committee? It's made up of three school committee members, two Shawshing tech employees and two parents who come from the communities that the three school committee members do not. Which means you can't have two school committee members from the same community. Or parents from the same community. So is that, is that what?
I like that.
Is that, um, the consensus in this group?
I would say. Yes, well, maybe two, two kind of more.
Employees, two towns.
From towns that are not represented by the school.
Two towns not represented by the school. Two administrators.
It would make five.
Two employees, good.
Gotcha. That would make the five, yeah.
I think, I think we might have.
Yes.
Yes.
Hopefully you vote that, you know, five, that's one.
Yeah, so that's.
Okay.
How do we, as school committee members, express our interest or disinterest in being on said subcommittee? Can we do that now?
Well, I'll, we can, hey, sit, one vote, be the chair. Cause maybe you should vote on the, that seven-member makeup.
I would move that motion as put out by Mr. Jackson. But I, I would, my only caveat would be that two employees, at least one of them, is from the, from the vocational side. I think that's very important.
Uh, uh, wouldn't it be the three school committee members who would select one of them themselves as the chair? Or would you have a non-school committee member as the chair?
Don't we have to do a chair? I would say the school committee members as the chair.
Committee appointed, KLS.
But three members who, whether they are chief of the nation.
You don't have to.
No, we, we have, we have, we have, we have selected three committee.
What?
Do we have this?
I think we can, I think that we can nominate someone to chair, which will be a school committee member. Let's use a vote about the seven-member makeup first.
There's a motion on the floor.
Right, there is a motion on the floor for the seven-member makeup.
Right, second.
Second, okay, Nancy. Okay, Ken. Chris. Ken.
Yes.
Brian.
Yeah.
Charlie.
Yes.
Cheryl, yes. Karen, yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
That's it, Brad, you have a vote.
Well, that's also a lot to jump around.
So now, um, the, if you want to, um, appoint the three members, um, or talk about a process to appoint those three members?
I would, just nominating a chair search for, um, the superintendent search chair.
Second.
Chair.
Because Bob, Bob, you want, making Bob the chair of the superintendent search committee. Nancy.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
Cheryl, yes. Karen, no. Ron. Bob. And I vote yes, you have a vote.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Use your knowledge wisely.
Thank you, I will. I won't disappoint any of yous.
Okay. All right, so, since you're the chair.
I suppose the next process would be how do we pick the next two members?
Two members. Uh, first step is find out who's interested. Well, that's what I was gonna say.
I would personally, this is one of my personal reasons to be on the school committee. Where we are near the main, with Mr. Lyons, Newland, and Mr. Rogers. And now, Jackson, but.
I can't hear you.
Ron wants it, okay.
Sorry, I would just say, this is, this is one of the reasons I ran the school committee, decided to get involved, to make sure Shawshing is, um, the right, we have to find the right person to carry on the great things we're doing here.
Respectfully, I say the same things, even though obviously Ron and I cannot be the committee members. We're both four.
Well, do you two wanna go on home and stuff?
Back with one of the videos.
Have the purple shirt.
Right. Yes, Karen also having a chat.
I can't hear either, that's why I'm so interested.
Taryn and Ron. Who else would like to do it? I have an interest in representing the three.
Well, woman is already represented, so, well, um, which is fine.
Ken, would you be part of that?
No, I am not very proud of it.
Okay.
Um, Ryan and the three of them.
Well, I'm interested, I would like to be part of it, but, um, again, I, I still have limitations, so. There's a lot of work involved, I would love to be helpful. Like Ron says, it's something I wanna be part of.
I prefer the senior better, remember? Ken. Pat?
What about Pat and Christine too? Yeah, Ken, Christine, either one of you are interested?
I think, um, I think our policy, uh, um, budget subcommittee and I think being there, uh, uh, is gonna take a lot of my time this year. Um, so I think I'm cross with, um, the, uh, charity towards the superintendent search committee. I would, I, I would do it if we needed to have a representation from my town. But I do trust that people on the school staff, um, uh, have mentioned that it's about trust. So I do trust, uh, you know, the interest of this school and other people on other schools teams. So, um, I would say, I would do it if you needed, you know, a member of my town to do it. But I think that was about a policy subcommittee, a budget subcommittee. And it's my first year, it's not, it's not a lot, and, um, going to be a lot of change personally.
Okay. Pat?
Have you been, have you been down to the chair of the policy subcommittee?
I don't, it's like, yes, you are, yes.
Yes, I have?
Yes, you are.
Does it have a year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Interesting.
Ken, Ken. Can we lose Ken?
I really wanna be part of this, I'm not gonna put my name up.
Pat?
Yeah, I got you, yes, I heard you, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, we lost Ken.
No, I'm here, sorry.
I lost.
I'm sorry. I think some of the new members, like, I think, like, Denise, Karen and, uh, and Carol, I think, you know, they need good choices. Um, they, you know, like, this, I'm not saying, I think you maybe should have a fresh perspective this time. People who were on it last time, those who were paying members, so I would say people, you know, who were on it last time, you know, maybe people, sorry, people who aren't, aren't on it today last time are one, with their, um, they forward. Uh, when you're on the chair, I think would be good options. Um, I think I would make a choice to kind of, uh, you know, person, uh, front, you know, protecting the table.
So, Ron, you were on the last, was it Nancy? No, she was fine.
Didn't she do some?
Well, because anyone, people get along with them, but that was everyone.
One of the people personally, Ron, Karen, and Nancy.
And I just wanna ask that, I, I've been involved with this, with all the parents, and I'm interested in helping, I know I'm a pretty good girl, but I wanted to clarify that you presented that you do not want to protect the children. So of course if you did, then I would ask you to.
All right, I think, I think.
That's my thought.
It is very kind.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, the, as people are considering their ability to be able to commit completely to this process, um, I really appreciate Christine's, um, uh, view on this, that you have to kind of look at your ability to be able to, uh, look at your entire commitment. Uh, you know, we have a policy subcommittee that's got some very heavy lifting this fall in terms of the admissions policy, uh, that is gonna take a lot of time. This process is gonna take a lot of time. Uh, you have to have, the, the more flexibility that people have in their schedules, the better. Uh, because you will have to meet over the, over many nights to screen candidates, to have interviews. You have to do the interviews, if you have like twelve interviews, you've gotta do like four interviews over three nights. That's like a four-hour, you know, and Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, it's deliberate on Thursday. I mean, there's, there's, this, there's a big chunk of time that, um, you are committing to this. So I just, and for all the people who are interested, I just wanted to emphasize how, what a commitment this is, um, before you, uh, you know, so you, so you're aware of what you're signing up for.
But we did, we'll still. I oppose. I will say I'm very interested in doing it, however, between the two pillars of people, Ron is probably less busy than I am. I could make it work, if the people wanted me, I could make it work. But realistically, Ron is probably the less busy person. And maybe we just ask everybody to write your names and give them all the love and, uh, tell them, and, and, and discuss them all, folks, and it's quiet.
So you're telling us you're not committed by the open game.
Never mind.
Sorry.
Not quite, all right.
I mean, I, I would agree, Ken certainly know, know offense to Ron, but I think that whoever is a committee member this time should be somebody different than the last time.
I'm here.
I just said the, the committee members on the search committee should be different. I agree with Ken from the first time, than the last.
Well, I, I just wanted to. Well, I think Tara Yields is, so I'm just, I'm standing at long Ron at four.
Yeah, I know, I understand, I have plenty of time to, I'm wide open, so I mean, like, but, uh, I, 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 I'm just, I'm just.
With that point favorite, yes, maybe it makes the most sense of looking at everybody's thoughts and everybody's comments, I would propose Ron and Cheryl, because Ron and Nancy both have school committee experience, and Ron is as busy as I am. You and Ron have more school committee experience than Cheryl and I, but you also have policy sub- you also have policy subcommittee, so maybe Ron and Cheryl make the best set, make the most sense. Not that I don't love Nancy, but Nancy's gonna be busy with policy.
Somebody may wanna make a motion.
I'll make a motion that Ron Fusco and Cheryl Barlownee join Bob Peterson as the super, as the school committee representative on the superintendent search committee.
Second.
Okay, uh, Nancy.
Yes.
Okay, Chris.
Yes.
Kent.
I still think what Bob said, I mean, I don't know if that's what we're talking about here, but, I don't know.
Well, we already have a motion, so you can say yes or no, or.
Smart choice.
Okay. Brian.
Uh, yeah.
Charlie.
Yeah.
Cheryl.
Yeah.
Sharon.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Fusco, yes, uh, it's, uh, nine.
Nine, yes.
It wasn't.
I know.
Nancy voted yes, um, Kent, okay. Everybody voted yes, it says Kent will judge the question.
And suddenly both of us are asleep.
Yes, ma'am. It's my thing, I didn't. So I don't forget, I have them written down. Okay, so you gotta get them in, for now. And does, how do we, do we just put out emails slash social media, looking for people to be on the superintendent search committee?
I'd like to see your questions, I'd like to do the survey monkey first.
Okay. Alright, so there's two parts to this survey monkey. The first part is, we do have to spend a little money on this, because, um, I have a free survey monkey, which is where I created these questions, we are limited to forty responses. Um, that seems kind of low to me. I can't really, I have other surveys that I've done in the past that are more than forty.
We can use, uh, we can use Microsoft, we can use our, so we can create it through Microsoft.
You mean, make it anonymous?
Yeah, uh, yes.
There have been requi, I have gotten requests that the responses be able to be anonymous, um, so that people can say negative things and not, maybe unnecessarily worry. Here are my questions. So I have four questions to the parents, and then four questions for faculty, staff, to your employees. As a parent, what do you see as Shashin's strengths and weaknesses? What do you think are the most important issues for the superintendent to address? What qualities do you think are vital to a vocational superintendent, at Shashin specifically? What do you think should be the top priorities for a superintendent to address in the next few years? What are some of Shashin's, oh, and now we're back, now the teachers. That was, no, that's four, I didn't divide it in the first part. Then for the staff, what are some of Shashin's strengths and weaknesses? Without detailing events that have occurred in the past, what needs to change? And what are some recent policies slash procedures, et cetera, that are good changes? What do you think are the most important qualities that we should be looking for in a superintendent? And what do you think should be the top priorities for a superintendent to address in the next few years?
Anybody wanna add to that?
Very good question.
I need to add just like a quick additional comment and suggestion, but it sounds really, like we covered everything.
But we asked, would there be any connection to Shashin? Oh, we're gonna have.
You're gonna make parent or staff?
Well, they're either a parent or some type of faculty member. What I'm thinking is that we use Aspen to send this out with an ex, so we know who we're sending it to. And in the description of the survey, we include a link, and we say, this is anonymous, please limit your answers, your responses to the questions asked, um, you know, we are only, nicely said, of course, we are only looking at thought about the superintendent search right now.
But you only wanted to ask, can I answer it if it's a parent or a staff?
Well, we're sending out one survey to parents and another survey to staff.
Well, it'll be different, okay, that's not missing that, sorry, thank you.
So you said we can send that through Microsoft, Brad?
I can, um, I, I, I need to talk to, to make sure we can do it through, you know, we can make it pretty much, yeah.
Go ahead, talk, and, yeah.
So, survey monkey, just so you know, has, um, an annual fee or a month-to-month fee. I'm not thinking that there's gonna be a lot more opportunities that we're gonna need a survey. So, month-to-month, if we did it for a month, we did it for two months, it's about a hundred dollars a month. There is an option, um, you can get a discount if you are, if you have credentials that you are education involved. I have no test credentials, but I would think that's something we can look into.
I think, I think that might be a problem.
So, I mean, it was.
I might have a credential too.
It was probably, you know, we could probably do this for less than two hundred dollars. Possibly less than a hundred.
Well, you speak to you, Nancy, like, I'm sure rather than waiting, that's why I'm with that. I want, can you get it done?
Oh, it's something I can't answer.
Yeah, Ken, what was your question?
Uh, um, uh, so it's three school committee members, and then, which is, um, one of ten. Um, two, three, so we're gonna, then we have to add demonstration.
Yes.
Two of four, two of four.
Four eight.
Stop saying it, it's two of four eight.
One of whom is on the vocational side of the ballot.
And one of the other.
Yeah. Not necessarily.
Or maybe, it's, the only restriction is one has to be, uh, on the vocational side.
Okay, and then, just two community members.
Yes.
One Burlington and one in Bedford. Bedford, Bedford.
Yes, yes. Alright. I like that.
The only odd thing about that, this observation, along with that, I love Bedford and Burlington, both to be the two communities, the fewest number of kids here. Community representatives.
So, maybe we don't, what if a Bedford business person, who are a Bedford, um, co-op business, were interested? Does it have to be a Bedford or Burlington parent? Or does it have to be a Bedford or Burlington resident who has a connection to Shashin?
Yeah, I, I think we can come up with somebody, I would hope, certainly in both towns, even though they have fewer representatives, I'm sure there are people in both towns who do it.
Right. I'm just asking sort of how we phrase it, you know, maybe we don't say, we want a parent from Bedford. Maybe we say, or you say, you want a person, a resident of Bedford, who either has a child at the school, or is, maybe has an alumni at the school, have an alumni, or is involved.
I think community member.
Yeah.
It should be something you just currently or has been a parent, because otherwise, I think the greater concern is going to say, well, where's the talent important? To give a business manager a CEO, doing, uh, job share, uh, you know, a co-op, uh, I don't think that's fun, I really think it should be a parent.
I, I have to tell you, I completely agree with Nancy. If you don't have talents on this committee, um, they, they are, they have to have the voice of this committee.
Your point.
Alright, so for both of these positions.
Parents, but I, I was, I'm sure it would stop people.
And we can, we can send out, you know, uh, we'll send Bob a copy of the former, of the solicitation that was made prior, and we, because I can send, we can send an email out to just Bedford and Burlington parents, and ask them to volunteer.
And explaining to them why they're dearly excited, that's because they have a free marriage or school committee.
They have a free child at the time, is that ready? You got that, Bob?
I got it, bud. So the mechanism for getting the committee, the committee filled out, we've got three school committee members, so the mechanism and the timeline for getting the two community members will be an invitation, an invitation that comes from the superintendent's office, to the currently enrolled parent.
Well, I have to put on Bob, but I would assume it would come from Bob. Maybe, we can, we can have it come from Bob through our.
You don't sign the letter, you can serve it.
Okay.
And, and they'll, and they'll return applications, and then, oh, Mark, you know, they're, they'll send their.
Letter of intent.
Their letter of intent to, to Bob, internal, not to me. If you don't want, you don't want your candidate, if you don't want none of the candidates, you don't want your superintendent.
They can, um, direct the need to the office.
But one of the things, the, uh, I'm sorry, it's something that's not here, so I don't wanna interrupt.
So we'll, we're just talking about how we're gonna solicit parents, so between Bob and Karen and I, we'll figure out a process and, and get, so, if, you know, get a list.
You do the second letter, then.
The nine, one of the points that they use a different term, they said the A.S.O.N., point person, contact person, somebody on the school committee that would be the go-to, excuse me, on the search committee, that would be the go-to person, and that, and that's all of the stuff is gonna be in a day with one that's done to change.
But actually, that's what it is.
We signed up for, yeah, we have parents for, for.
The point person.
Yes.
And then, and then, um, we can send out a, uh, a, the same solicitation last time came from, uh, Mr. Gallagher to, um, to our staff, and we can send that out the same way, from the subcommittee chair or the search committee chair, which is ultimately the subcommittee of the school committee, and, uh, to the members of Shashin's staff, volunteer. We will get a question from the S.T.A. about whether they get a choice. And that, which is gonna be hard, considering we only have two slots left for us, so. No, I'm not, I, I'm just, I'm just.
That's very. How many, what, who, uh, who of the employees in the building are members of the S.T.A.? What, what group are members of the S.T.A.? Teachers.
From the teaching staff.
But not the cafeteria, not the administration, not the secretary, no. But, so potentially that vocational person would probably be a teacher. Because if that, or it's the, it's Norwood's secretary, or.
The, the Teachers Association, traditionally, when you have a bigger committee, when you have a bigger subcommittee, if John Bagby's listening, if you have a bigger subcommittee, sometimes you give them the, the opportunity to appoint their own member, independent of, of, of the, of this, of this process. That's, with only two slots, as Bob mentioned, that, that's, that's impractical, so.
But there's a decent chance that a vocational person would be a member.
There's a difference between an S.T.A. member and an S.T.A. representative.
Okay.
That's the, that's the.
The other four members are, the school, the school, the three school committee members are children.
It's a subcommittee. The three school committee members, yeah.
I think the answer's question, in order to align the subcommittee.
Just the three people, just the three school committees.
Just the three school committee members. Well, not, well, determine the other four. If not, we have started it.
Well, and you are, you've set, you've set some parameters, you've said that the two parents have to be from, one from Burlington, one from Bedford, and you've set a parameter that one of the employees has to have vocational experience, so committees kind of given the.
And that, that's where the three school committee members begin.
Let's go back to the early 1990s.
Well, um, if the district attorney is going to be selected, by my bad, it'll put on that district attorney.
I would just urge us collectively to be less parochial when we're thinking of the district.
Right. Unfortunately.
I think, I think we have to be a little less parochial and think as a district, and trust with the representatives in different towns. I do think, uh, Nancy's comments do raise another issue, which is maybe something that the chair of the committee, and the superintendent in particular, will have to deal with or assuage people, is there could be some, particularly first people who's on the part of the Teachers Association, who maybe have had more of a, you know, a formal role in the past, and if there's a view that they're being blocked out, or given less consideration, the extent that they cause any hard feelings, and maybe needs to assuage that, whether it's to reach out, an opportunity, a forum for, however you do it, but it's a consequence of a smaller committee, and I think.
We have a forum, it's called service.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't pick the, the Jackson. So I would suggest, I would also, sometimes, I would pick that one.
Yeah, so that's, that's after the three, that's after the three school committee members on the subcommittee, it's part of that.
There's no, there's really no decision to make that one of the internal families won't be in this, you know, this sort of, that would solve.
I mean, it is likely, it is, I mean, I can't imagine a scenario where a teacher is not going to be a member of the screen search. And all of our teachers are essentially, that I'm aware of, all are members of the S.T.A. They'll be represented, they'll be, they'll be a member of the S.T.A. on the, what, whether that is a member that's selected by the president of the S.T.A., or the subcommittee, which kind of, that's the only issue.
What if, uh, two in-house members from the education side in the academic sector?
The vocational side, and we're, we're not.
Well, the, yes, the others, not vocational.
Because it could end up being administrative.
Say, what if they end up being administrative, and we consider putting up a seat for an S.T.A.?
Add a seat?
Would you, see?
I guess you understand now, if I were, if I were. But you guys will be picking who it is, so you'll look at, you know, the ten people from the staff that wanna be part of it, you'll split them into two groups, the vocational and the non-vocational. You'll look at why they wanna be on the committee, and then you'll pick, and you all know that union participation is a good thing, so that can be a factoring decision. And you all know that union participation is a good thing, so that can be a factor in your decision.
My fact is, my decision can be, if we're willing to, to all around, the opportunity to, based on.
But if you, right. But hopefully you'll have multiple candidates that you like, and then you consider the STA salary enough, that's yours, is it? Like Brian, Bob said, we have to discuss, we have to discuss the project.
We'll work on those, but it's a, that's probably, so you can get them, so.
I'll give you a draft, okay? Because, well, it's, well, it's, I don't think that anymore.
Clearly, we can, we can, then it's a false statement.
What?
Is there anything else to go on?
Uh, huh.
Bob, yeah.
I don't know, I'm not.
Talk about the timeline, Bob, is that something we talk, is that something, a subcommittee, can we do it now? We, we did that. I think we can probably do that.
Okay, I would.
I, I was just doing it up.
My, my suggestion would be.
What that you can use, what's.
Over the next, over the, between now, the school committee's next regular meeting is September twenty eighth. Between now and then, the subcommittee can meet, hopefully fill itself out. And perhaps put together a ti, a draft time order and present that to the school committee on Septem, on September twenty eighth. Just to kind of keep everybody in sync.
Do we?
And then, the timeline of that beyond there, I mean, we have to figure out, we need to seek applications, there's a survey monkey and going to like this and, and all that stuff.
My only question is, do we want to get the survey out before school start? Because if we do, that's in the next two weeks. Oh, yeah, it's in a month.
Yeah, the fact on Monday.
Never mind. I keep seeing, you know, the people go, when's school start? I'll say it is, alright, I got time, no, you don't, yes, fine.
Well, what's, um, the subcommittee, why don't you, can you forward that document to me, I'll get another one. We could tweak that, figure out how we can chat out.
I'll, I'll make it into a document right now, it's sitting on, I'll copy it out of the survey monkey.
You can just, survey monkey, a lot of it's PDF.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do. Okay, we need to discuss anything else, or is it, you know, put it to you guys? Yes, fine.
There's one other item, just maybe for clarification, it's not an agenda item, so we can't discuss it per se, but least for me personally, the cancellation of the five thirty session has created some confusion um, about whether or not there was going to be a meeting or vote or some affirmative step by the committee based on what the town of Billerica is doing on its COVID-related policy at their meeting tomorrow night. And, um, since we took that off of our agenda, there seemed to be some ambiguity in the communications. And I will say, I'm not sure of the thoughts that Bob had shared in his, his email, but some, whether or not we were still going to be voting to affirm a policy, whether it be one presented by the superintendent or one that was adopted from the Board of Health. Or, I understand, the Board of Health may take, make some, act, take some actions that'll essentially decide for us, to an extent, but not completely. Um, so I, I would appreciate some clarification, because that's what we would have been doing if we got here at five thirty to review that item. Because I, I do think, and, and every town's going through this. I know, there's going to be a meeting tomorrow, they'll do the same process tomorrow night. Board of Health went through it Monday night, left with as much confusion as they started based on the light up of the meeting. But anyway, so I just wanted, because I thought, Brad, you were kind of implying that there might be the need to take some kind of vote or, or clarification of policy well before we are scheduled to meet again on September twenty eighth. If the, if the Billerica Board of Health does not vote in such a way that, um, makes your vote move, then we would have to meet sometime next week to decide policy.
I just.
But the Billerica Board of Health is, the Billerica Board of Health is planning tomorrow night to discuss the, um, whether they are going to affirmatively make the decision for us, for all Billerica, for all, um, public buildings within the town of Billerica, which it has the jurisdiction to do.
Right now, Billerica's policy is if you are in Billerica, town buildings, the community center, the town hall, you have to wear masks. It is not covering schools right now. So I'm sure that is why.
That's the policy that was made by the town administrator, current president. The Board of Health, who has no, who has no authority over, who has no authority over the, Billerica Public Schools or Shawshing Vocational, uh, high school. They, the Board of Health, because we are located in Billerica, the Board of Health can order, um, can, can vote an order that would, would supersede your decision.
Right.
You can, if they say you have, if they say we have the mask, we have the mask. And nobody at this table can say anything different.
If they say we don't have, we can still decide we want to?
Yes.
Who else can input for the five communities?
We are located in the town of Billerica.
So is it, is it, is it still a matter how rampant it is in other communities?
The school, the, the school committee can make a deci, the school committee can still make a decision if the Billerica Board of Health does not order masks. If the Billerica Board of Health orders masks, then you, then we have masks. Then you, you cannot countermand that order. So, after consulting with, it was my recommendation that we figure out, because this has been a very contentious issue in, in communities. Wilmington just spent four hours, their school committee last night, and they voted one in favor, one opposed, with eight abstentions.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, it is, or something crazy like that. Um, so, um, if they, I, I didn't think, it was my recommendation to cancel for two reasons. First of all, we'd only set aside half an hour for discussion that I, it was becoming clear to me anyhow was gonna last a lot longer than a half an hour. And two, it might be a discussion that was not worth having because the next night, the discussion, if the committee had decided against masks, then you would have been essentially overruled. You, you had the potential to have that vote overruled. And I didn't think that was a good look for the Shawshing school committee, which is why I recommend that if that would be proposed.
Thank you.
Alright, so we may be meeting next week.
We may be meeting next week. And we also may be meeting, um, there may be some issues around a memorandum of understanding, um, around, between the STA for reopening, uh, meeting with the, um, with the president Thursday. Um, because some of the protocols have changed, um, some of the reopening, um, some of the quarantine protocols have changed. Um, and that will, in some ways, depend on what the masking situation is. So, this is still very fluid, and I apologize that I, we're just gonna have to be flexible, and if we have to call a meeting, we're gonna have to call a meeting.
No problem.
Thank you very much, appreciate them.
I appreciate your flexibility, everybody. It's been a crazy couple of weeks.
Can you, can a journet be, yeah?
So.
Motion to a journet. Alright, Nancy? Motion to a journet.
You say this.
Oh, Chris? Kent? Ron?
Yes, yes.
Karen?
Yep.
Cheryl?
Yeah.
Charlie?
Yeah.
Brian?
Yeah.
Bob?
Yeah.
And Fusco? Yes, and Fusco, we are.
It is eight oh three, goodnight, goodnight, everybody, man, everybody, thank you.